Our ability to run fitness programs when we get into the new senior center and our ability to provide one-on-one support, counseling, social service, and to be able to help people with filling out their fuel assistance applications, getting them their SHINE information, which is their Medicare information, things like that. That one-on-one service that we provide for seniors right now, that's what's going to get cut. That's what's going to hurt the most. Because for us, there literally is no area other than that for us to cut. Our expense budget is $4,000. So cutting our expense budget doesn't even remotely account for that $22,000 and some odd dollars that we would need to cut in order to hit that 30% mark that we would be asked to do. I'm already frightened with the current budget as to how we can fill the beautiful senior center that's being built. And I do thank Bud very much and Al for his work to help with the new building. But we've got this new building coming. We're on a roll. We are on schedule to be in it in January, but it's going to be a building void of activity and void of staff if we have to experience a 30% cut. Are there any questions I have or I can answer for anyone? The department's really straightforward. It's not much. Not much to cut. We don't have a lot to begin with.
It's not really a question, it's a comment. But one of the, excuse me, sorry. The concerns that you hear often as kind of opposition to the override is seniors who are living on a fixed income where, you know, the $15 a month, you know, will make a difference in their, you know, day-to-day living. But this is like a perfect example that if the, if people vote no because we want our seniors to not be affected and be able to maintain their homes, well, if they don't have the assistance, you know, if the override does not go through, so there's not someone there to help them with their help, their fuel assistance applications, SNAP applications, Medicare reimbursement, all of that, then that also, I think, you know, the services that they get are worth more than $15 a month, I think, to those seniors that receive those benefits. And those being cost, those being cut would, for even people who, seniors who have the means to get some of those, that assistance elsewhere would still not, it would not definitely be as cost-effective to them as if the override passes and their taxes may go up, well, will go up, you know, $15, but they continue to get the services that they need. You know, and as important as activities and fitness are, you know, we're talking about really important things such as, you know, heating assistance, fuel, oil, and things along those lines that can really also be kind of life or death for, you know, people who may be ill or need that kind of assistance.
Absolutely. If we are, if we sustain these 30% cuts, what good is it to continue to have the lower rate for their taxes if the seniors don't have the support to be able to get the extra financing to still age in place?
Right.
Yes. How many seniors do you currently service?
In the town of Templeton, we have 1,500 seniors. That's based on the 1,572 or something around there. That is what the 2000 census was based on, I'm sorry, 2010 census. And that is where we get our funding from the state. It's called a formula grant where we receive a seven, eight dollars this year, eight dollars per senior in town. And it's always based on the most recent federal census. Now, how many people in that that we see every day is small. People who come into the senior center at the moment because of the one-room schoolhouse setup that we have at the moment, people who are coming in are coming in for that one-on-one counseling and support. We've got a few classes that go on, a privilege gate once a week, but the majority of our service is twofold, the transportation and the meals on meals. And that's all, you know, outreach done from us out to the community. But the people coming in our building, those are the people who are looking for help with all the different applications. They're looking for support with trying to get some medical equipment in their homes so that they can age in place. They might be looking for some in-home visiting nursing services, recommendations like that. And then we do get the occasional issues. We had a, technically, person wasn't a senior, person was 58, but we are the only social service agency that is a municipality, social service agency, is the COA. So where else are people going to go for support? Also, what people forget a lot is that the food pantry, that's run out of the Council on Aging as well. So the coordinator who only works 10 hours a week, she volunteers her time constantly. I always say that she's a package deal because when she comes to work, her husband comes and also volunteers with her. That's all part of the senior center. So we had somebody today who was 58 years old. They're calling, they're frightened, their light's going to get shut off the next day. There are programs and services that can help with that. It takes a great deal of time for myself and my staff to find those services, put this, you know, the people in touch with one another, get the information sharing going. That's what I'm, I know we're not going to be able to do as effectively if we're losing staff, who that is their focus.
Can I add a follow-up question? I read somewhere, maybe you can correct me if I have the figure wrong, that the food pantry is servicing approximately 800 families. Is that right? Am I quoting the right figure?
We do fill, we do do Philistine as well.
Okay.
It is both. I feel like it's 800, it might be more like 800 individuals a month.
Okay.
I don't have those figures in front of me, but we do serve individual seniors, we serve individual adults, and we do serve several families, including children as well. As everyone might already be aware, but, you know, the largest chunk of people who are in poverty and who are suffering are families with children.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a comment that when they don't have those services, what often follows in life is that those services aren't playing through, and people get lost to the cracks. And then we have other services that, you know, the police, the, you know, people get lost, and then they tend to be, you know, withdrawn, and then they could be hurt or they could be alone, or, do you know?
Isolation is a huge problem, yes.
So one thing leads to another, where if you cut this, then, you know, the police might get a call that this could be, it could have been avoided by having contact with, you know, your services.
Yes, isolation affects elders severely. It does cause mental issues, a mental illness, but isolation also affects people and manifests itself in a physical way as well. It very well does, yes. And we work very closely with the fire department and with the police department to be able to create, you know, like a triage, triad type of situation where if there's somebody that has been put on our radar, I pick up the phone and call the chief and said, what do you know about this person? What should I be aware of? How can I help them? And he can answer those questions for me. And if somebody came to the police department and they thought that they might have had contact with the senior center, we can provide that back and forth. But that, that takes, you know, dedicated hours to do that.
You know, that's where the community is, that's what's in the community.
It is the definition of, yes. All right. So, thank you all.
Thank you, bud.
Hi, I'm Jackie from the library. I apologize for not having a breakdown of the exact areas where our budget will be affected. Our budget's created by our board trustees, and they are hoping to meet within a week or so to determine where that money's going to come from specifically. I've worked out some scenarios, and they all pretty much end up at the same place. Our entire library budget is $54,295. That keeps your library open 25 hours a week. It keeps myself, two library assistants on staff, as well as a custodian. That is also our materials budget, our lights, our membership dues. We do a lot with that money. And what will basically represent a little bit less than a $20,000 cut if this override should fail, will devastate us, the state and every other department. Every scenario I've worked out leaves us falling below the minimum of 20 hours a week, which will cause us to lose our certification with the state. That's the big picture. I see our library budget as a little picture and a big picture. The little picture is both library assistants will be gone, the custodian will be minimal, the hours will be reduced to the point where our programs won't be able to take place any longer, our preschool story hour, weekly class visits, or coming to the center school will all have to go away. The big picture is the certification because making those minimum of 20 hours a week, which we will fall below, a minimum of materials expenditure, which we will fall below, will cause us to lose our certification. That basically means that any Templeton resident who has a DART library card or a Westminster library card, when they go to those libraries, they'll, they will not be allowed to borrow materials. I've spoken with the directors of all the libraries in the area, and they sympathize, but this is what they have to do. They will, those residents of Templeton will be flagged, and they won't have borrowing privileges anywhere in the state. And they also won't have very much of a resource in their own home library. We'll probably be open two days a week. We will have very little money left on our materials. So in that, that certification, we actually had to get a waiver last year with the help of documentation from the board of selectmen and the accountant. Because of the cut we sustained last year, we fell below that minimum. We were able to get a waiver, which maintained our state aid, which was about an additional $8,000 from the state, and allowed us to go to other libraries. If this override fails, we will go below the level where a waiver will even be considered. Once you lose that certification, it takes a minimum of a year to regain it, and that's only if your funding's been restored. And it still take, it will take the better part of a year to regain that borrowing privileges, that resource sharing that I think is critical in a little library. And if you have any questions, I think it's done.
I can probably talk about this while I'm being upset.
Me too.
We're in a fabulous summer program.
Thank you.
Will you be able to maintain that?
We haven't had a summer program for two years now. We couldn't do it last year because of the reduction in staffing. We did a minimal one this year. You know how I am with the kids.
As I do.
I try to make a lot out of a little. So we, we did what we could, and I don't think that any kids walked away feeling disappointed.
They'll never do.
I think disappointed. Thanks. I felt disappointed, though. They, they deserved more. And honestly, when I heard Kentalk at the town meeting about his experience with guys counselors at your school, those class visits from Templeton Center School, I can tell you, some, for some of those children, for many of those children, that is the only time they're walking through the doors of the library, and they're thrilled. So it's something that is, is going to be missed if it, if it has to go away to the extent that it will, if this fails.
I'm assuming, but I just wanted to make sure and say it out loud, so not only will Templeton residents not be able to use their cards at other libraries, but I'm assuming that eliminates the possibility of interlibrary loan as well.
It does. We're cut off. You're cut off. And it's not a, it's not a punitive thing, it's just a, it's a way of kind of holding a town's hand to the fire, saying, you've got to do the right thing. You've got to fund your library adequately. You can't just expect the next town's taxpayers to do that for you and use their resources. And we've been really, I've been at the slacker, I've been director for 18 years, and we've been really fortunate to have selectmen, board, and town people support us to the point where this has never happened, so.
So when, when the school, when the school, I'm thinking out loud really, because this is so upsetting to me, because the, the library for me is, when I first moved to Templeton, was just really such a lifesaver. You know, it was central, everything for me. And think that when all the kids I saw come in during the summer for their reading books, for the summer reading, that they won't be able to, those parents will have to go by them, they won't have, they won't be coming into the library. They won't have the experience of being a child and exploring and imagining and growing through the excitement of books, you know, like to create an individual with hopes and dreams. I mean, they just, it's not just, well, it's your library and everything. And I can't imagine that's going to affect the school, it's going to affect our parents that can't afford books, that need to go to the library because they won't be able to get those books anywhere else. And those little kids that walk over, you know, you see them, they're skipping over, and now we have this beautiful sidewalk, and they're skipping over. That, they won't be doing that. They won't be going home to say, we went to, to the library today, Mom and Dad. It's just something that is such a small building, with such a small amount of money, would be devastating to me personally and so many people. I just couldn't imagine Templeton without it. It would just really feel like not a community, and it would be such, it would be so heartbreaking, really. And I just wanted to kind of make that statement, that this is where that falls in. It's just like you're closing the doors. You're closing the doors to those children, you're closing the doors to the school, you're closing the doors to the parents, getting these things done, you know? It's, it's a lot.
Thank you, Jackie. And I believe that's all the department heads that we, yes, sir?
I have a question for you, for the selectmen. Since this is an informal meeting, how do, I'd like the selectmen to address, how do we get into this mess? And if the override passes, then we're not going to come back again next year for something very similar.
How we get into this?
How do we get into this mess?
All right, I will, I'll speak first, and I'll speak as just a resident, as an observation. I think for too long, the town, people of Templeton, and this is back before I moved back from being away from the military in 2003, looking back at town reports and things like that, I think for too long, the residents of Templeton have been short-changed by the people that sit at this table. That would be the board of selectmen in general, whoever, whatever year you want to pick. Going back probably to when Proposition Two and a Half came about, you can go back and look, and there've been some large overrides passed, $1 million, $800,000. That certainly wasn't the norm, and the last, a good part of the last number of years, I believe at least a small override of, say, around $250,000, $300,000 or so, was needed and was justified, because a two-and-a-half percent increase, it just doesn't cover, it doesn't cover inflation, it doesn't cover the increase in medical insurance cost and retirement cost. And when you're using stabilization funds to pay your share of cost of a retirement fund, and a stabilization fund is, is basically a savings account, it's reserve money, and as you've seen, if you've read the papers lately, that can affect your bond rating, which affects what you pay to borrow money. And I think too many years, you know, and maybe it sounds good from a political standpoint, maybe it sounds good from projecting that, wow, we're doing really well, you know, balanced budget and no tax increase, but I think a disservice was done to the town by continually following that and not pushing for an override, maybe not every year, but every, at least every other year. And I know part of the reason Two and a Half was created was too many times politicians just, I mean, we just raised taxes just to solve a problem rather than try to attack it on several fronts. This year, and it actually started in 2012, when the savings and the extra money just ran out. We could no longer shuffle money around from here to here and play a shell game any longer. It just, the funds were just not there. It's like, you know, charging a credit card to pay this credit card bill. And this year, it's the school assessment, and as historically has been the case, and maybe it wasn't pushed enough over the years, but historically overrides have failed. And this year, it was the school assessment and an increase, and there was, you know, a push on both sides. And I think the problem, a part of the problem, has been brought to light, which may be a good thing about this whole long drawn-out process, was the system that's been put on us doesn't seem to add up. The towns are limited, cities and towns, for two-and-a-half percent increase unless you vote for an override to increase your taxes. But school districts can, you know, their budget can jump 3%, 2%. And if you're, you can only go up two, two-and-a-half percent on the town side, the school budget goes up 2%, you've got a half a percent left, and inflation is, is 3%. And plus your insurance and your retirement responsibility, you know, for Templeton and the neighborhood of like $300,000, $400,000 a year, you've got to fund all that stuff. I mean, you've got to fund it by law. And as we have seen, we have conflicting general laws. You go to town meeting, you know, one general law says, you know, the people are like the Congress of the state or the country, they appropriate the money. They say, this amount goes here, this amount goes here. We can put forth a budget on recommendation from the advisory committee, say, you know, we want to run the town on $4 million. Well, the taxpayers can say, no, you're going to do it for $3.75. And this year, you know, they found out there's that conflicting law, General 71, that, well, your school district, no, they, you know, your vote don't count. And I think that's how this is, we've got into this mess. And as far as will we be doing the same thing next year? Maybe. Hopefully not. Whichever way this process goes, come December, we can, I would like to begin that process and, and not wait so late in the year. And for whatever reason it, it happened that way, I was not here, so I wouldn't comment on it really, but I would like to start the process in December and start looking at numbers and with the school and everything else, and try to avoid this. But could it happen again? Yes, it could, because, you know, they're insurance and retirement responsibilities, you know, covered by law, just as the cities and towns do. The solution probably, or part of the thing would, the citizens of Massachusetts are just going to have to try to pressure the legislature, and they've already shown they don't listen to them all the time, because you all voted for tax, the people of Massachusetts voted to decrease their state income tax, and the boys and girls down on Beacon Hill said, oh, heck no, we don't care you voted for that. So it's a systemic problem. How to get it changed is, you know, it's a good question and a good project, but hopefully we don't end up with a push and shove with the schools next year, although, I mean, it could happen. My opinion is this override number, it was not enough to bring us up to what we really need, but the general consensus was a larger figure. We'd probably definitely not pass, and not even sure about, I give this one maybe 50%. So I know I didn't really, you know, give you maybe the answer you were looking for as far as will we avoid this next spring? Don't know. Hopefully we do, but I just, I don't know. And that's just my opinion as I see things.
If I could just comment as well, there's a fundamental issue in this applies, I'm sure you're aware, to local politics or state government or presidential elections, and that's any time that anyone tells you that they cannot raise your taxes and maintain services even, I'm not even talking about saying they're going to do more for you, it's, it's probably not going to happen. I mean, it's just a fact of life, is we know all of our expenses go up. You know, there were years where health insurance for the town went up 8%, 9% a year, and our insurances, so if you take the school out of the equation, the town's budget generally, roughly, is, you know, $4.5 million. A million dollars of that is just insurance costs. Now, that's all the various insurances, but so when you're actually talking about our operating budget, it's much smaller than that. So I, I think that with this override, the town really has a fundamental decision to make, and obviously the board of selectmen is obligated by law to respect whatever decision that is. We either can continue to have a full-time town, or we can have, you know, full-time town government in all of its various aspects, or we can have a part-time town government. That's really what it's going to come down to. We have tax rates that are lower than other towns in this county and the state that have their assessor's office open two days a week, that don't have a full-time police force. So we can't, it's impossible to have a tax rate that is a part-time town tax rate and still provide the level of services that, that we need for the town. And as, you know, Jeff had already said, this figure, I mean, I was in favor of the lower, the $620,000, $620,000 figure, just because of, you know, it's desperate, it's desperate that this passes if we want to maintain our, our form of government here in Templeton. But really, when you say, you know, there are no guarantees that this won't happen again, even in a few years, that we may need several hundred thousand dollars more on an override, just because of the, the situation of economics and that, as if the town's costs continue to increase, we can't continue to provide the same level of service when we had. You know, the school has, to varying degrees, the same type of problem. They have things that they have to, are told they have to fund, but, or to provide, but don't, you know, get funding for. The town, we have things that we have, services that we have to provide, positions that we have to provide, but that we don't get funding for. And ultimately, those, those costs and expenses have to trickle down in the form of taxes. So if, if the people of Templeton decide that they would rather have lower taxes than a full-time police force or a library that is, you know, has served them, then that is their, ultimately, their democratic option, and we'll have to respect whatever that choice is. I know, obviously, I have my opinion on what, the direction I hope the town goes, but, but it's, that, it will ultimately be, I believe, the, the remedy to this problem if the override fails, is that we'll have to really address the way that the whole town kind of functions. And that's me as a person, you know, as an individual, not speaking on behalf of the board or anything.
All right. So your question was, how do we get into this mess? It was a long process.
Yes. What is your opinion, or how you get into it and how to prevent it in the future?
I don't know that we can prevent it in the future, because I think the system is broken. I think the laws that are on the books are stacked against town government. I know we can't have a great school system and low taxes. Okay? I know we can't have both. It doesn't work that way. And the school system, the law, is in their favor to come and do this again, and again, and again, to place the town in this position. So it's up to the townspeople to decide, do you want a police force? Do you want fire? Do you want your roads plowed so that fire and rescue can get to you as well as the police? Because that's what's going to happen. Those are the consequences. Then you have your social service agencies. I consider the library that, the COA. You know, do you want to have a library that's open, that you can go and borrow materials from other places? And it's not just physical books. You can borrow, you can sit in the comfort of your home if you have that library card and download things to your devices. A lot of people do that. That's going to be gone. And it's that access to information. When you keep cutting that access to information, you narrow your world, and you become isolated. And that's what's going to happen to Templeton. That's what I see happening. I don't know how to stop it or prevent it from happening again. We were on the path, I felt the town was on the path, to live within its means, okay? To live within the budget that we had prepared, that the advisory board had recommended and worked on diligently for hours and hours of time, to get through this year so then we could come and present to the taxpayers a plan, what your override would do, because we knew we needed to go for an override. I mean, I knew we needed to go for an override. I don't know if anyone else did, but I think Mr. Bennett said as much. All right? But you have to build up credibility and trust with your taxpayers, and we didn't have enough time to do that. enough time to do that. So, we're in a situation where if the override fails, it will be devastating. There, there's no way around that. It will be very devastating to the eight thousand inhabitants of this town. Each and every one of us will be impacted in some way, shape, or form. I'm not worried for myself. I've got two old Sugahros, I think I can get up to a main highway and get myself to work. I'm worried about the guy down the end of the road who needs to get to the hospital and doesn't have four-wheel drive and maybe rescue can't get to him and help him out when he needs it. So, I don't have any solutions.
Uh, in, do you have another? In closing, uh, I'd thank all the department heads, uh, who came in, uh, and explained things, uh, I appreciate all of you who came. Uh, I thought it was important that you just don't hear this from us. Sometimes people say, "Well, the selectmen, they're, they're just talking, they'll find it, they'll do it." And if you just hear it from the same old group all the time, sometime it just seems like it's old news, repetitive, they're just, you know, winding the tape and just regurgitating the same old stuff all the time. I'm hoping with the department heads coming in and you actually now, you, you put some faces, had the figures and, and the reality of, uh, what the cuts will do to them doing their job and not only that, the, the kind of snowball effect that Jackie from the library and Senior Center and, you know, the roads not getting plowed, the police not being out there, you know, twenty-four-seven, um, the fire department not being able to do or continue the progress that has kind of been made. Now, I've just, a, a personal comment, I, I've never called the ambulance, I've, I've never had to. However, uh, my, no. However, uh, well, it's plastic, it'll do. However, my mother had, she had an aneurysm talking on the phone, uh, to my sister. If she wouldn't have been on the phone, she would probably be dead, uh, but she had to use it. And Templeton transported her from her doctor's office on Baldenville Road to Haywood Hospital to see her cardiologist because she was there for a simple doctor's appointment and something happened, uh, she continues to have a leaky valve, but, uh, something happened, she fainted out, uh, and they called Templeton Ambulance and they brought her, excuse me, to, uh, Haywood to see her cardiologist, which maybe not have saved her life, but, uh, from a personal standpoint, I know the value of having that service, uh, that was just down the street. So, I hope, like, putting faces, uh, to the numbers and seeing the, the snowball effect and the interconnection of all the departments and the things that you sometimes you don't think about. I, I don't, I don't think about the little Templeton library too much. Uh, I've been into it a few times. I remember when I was a kid, we used to, uh, get from Templeton Center, uh, go over to the library, uh, but lately, uh, no, I'm, um, I'm reading online stuff. But for the little kids, I, I think it's important for them, school-age kids, first, second, third grade, pre-k, whatever, they can get over there and get a little exposure, uh, to books and, and reading, uh, before they get on their electronic kick, uh, 'cause I think it's an important thing, uh, to do. Uh, and I hope, uh, we, I hope to have, uh, that we have a couple more of these. Last night, uh, suggestions were made how to get the word out better. I was hoping with, uh, just a little mention that was in the Gardner News today that we would have more people, uh, but for whatever reason, uh, we'll keep trying to get the word out better, uh, we'll have a few more before, uh, the date of the override. And just on a note, uh, to end on, uh, what we did last night as a board, we voted to, uh, have all the departments in town inventory, you know, their equipment, especially their office stuff, uh, just to get a handle on, you know, what we have and, uh, to kind of look at, you know, how long you've had it, how old and stuff, uh, to kind of plan for, you know, what we'll have to expend to, to replace and so forth. I just think it's kind of important, it's a starting point. Some people have made the suggestion, you know, have you had a financial plan? Do you do this? Have you done that, blah, blah, blah? And I know one, uh, one thought that I've, I've had and I hope to, we can discuss it, the Board of Selectmen had a open public meeting, is, uh, perhaps consolidating a few positions, um, into one. Uh, unfortunately, that would, you know, mean eliminating a couple of jobs, but, uh, I think in the end it would be, uh, more efficient, more cost-effective in the long run, um, be a little more convenient for the taxpayers who you have to use the departments and be a little more transparent and, and accountable. And another thing that it, I understand it had been brought up last spring and was met with a little resistance, however, uh, the part of it that was used saved some money and I think moving forward, uh, last night it was discussed, uh, central purchasing, in other words, each department not having, uh, an expense account to buy, just like office supplies, we buy them centrally and they would go to one place to, uh, to get what they need. And we could keep a better record of it, like, you know, and it's not to micromanage anybody, it's not to hamper them, but to me, it shows, uh, the taxpayers that, yeah, we, we do have, uh, a plan and we are trying to keep a, a better accountability and transparency and a better handle on how we spend your money on, you know, sometimes the small things, but it, it, you add it all up, uh, just to, uh, I think get a better handle on, on, you know, what we use and what we go through. And, uh, I made the comment, it's like when you're in the military, you, you need pencils, paper, you need printers, you need it, you go to supply and it gets, and it's accountability and you see, "Ah, this month we used, you know, this much, this much, this much." I think it just simplifies things and it gives the taxpayers at least the feeling that, um, their money is being, uh, you know, monitored better and, uh, it's being accounted for and tracked better. Again, this is not gonna save, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and it's not gonna solve this, this question, this problem, uh, this year or, you know, next year. It'd be very small scale, but I, I believe it'd be several steps that would, uh, at least give them the feeling that, hey, they're just not out there blowing their money or they're just not saying, "Yeah, give us some more money, give us some more money and, uh, we'll let you know we spend it, you know, next year." We just try to be a little more accountable and a little more transparent and, uh, I think that's a good thing. So, um, again, thank you all for coming. Uh, I hope to see you, uh, at, at the next one we have and, uh, I'm hoping the, uh, town department heads will be here with additional information. And if you could pass this on, uh, like you said, we'll, we'll try to, uh, put it in the Gardner News and ad and so forth and maybe something on a Gardner radio station to get the word out. Thank you very much all for coming.